You're going live, didn't say you're live yet. You are live.
Alrighty, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order, please. Can I get a roll call? Hello, welcome all everybody.
Hi.
Hello.
Commissioner Black?
Present.
Commissioner Riley?
I'm here.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Commissioner McElina?
Here.
Commissioner Tondino?
His mic's on mute.
Can I see him too?
Yeah, his name is, but he's not.
Jonathan, are you still there? Okay, he was here a second ago.
Commissioner McElina?
Here.
Also present is Zach Cook, the village attorney, Samantha Mendez, the director of community, planning and zoning, Tim Dodge, village manager, and Stephanie Warren, short-term rental administrative assistant. You do have a call.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, declaration of conflict of interest. Does anybody on the panel have conflict of interest with the cases we're hearing today? Okay, we're gonna take that as a no. Moving on, certification of compliance with the resolution 202001.
We certified that I posted the meeting and properties in compliance with the resolution 202001 and in compliance with section 5440 of the village municipal board.
Thank you. Jonathan, are you back now?
Yeah, I'm back.
Okay, thank you. Let the record state that Jonathan's here. I will take an approval of the agenda. So, somebody make motion, please.
So.
Okay, is that Alan, right?
Yeah, that's me. My second.
Okay, Ron second, Alan first. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Approval of the minutes from our regular meeting, February 4th, and our special meeting from May 26th. I looked at the meetings, the minutes, they were long, but I didn't see anything glaring. But Alan, I didn't check them for spelling errors. Did you check?
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval of the minutes for the February 4th meeting. But I wanna, I wanna talk about the next meeting, please.
Alright, so I got a motion for a February 4th meeting. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, and maybe pass. Okay, Alan, you have something to talk about the May 26th. Please, go ahead.
I guess on the motion that we voted it down for that one, for Townsend's UD.
Yes, sir.
I know, I know that afterwards, we had to list why we didn't, and I did not necessarily see that in the minutes. Steph.
True. Was that after we stopped recording, when you was doing that for the letter you were gonna send him?
Yeah, it was for the letter, but I, well, I added that.
She's looking.
Yeah, I am too. Sorry. The, it's on page 14, and it talks the, about the motion to approve, and it was voted down. And then it says, motion did not pass with the four against and two in favor. And I thought there should have been a comment right after that note. If, if it's not needed, then it just had to go back to the applicant. Is that correct?
What do you guys think? Is that something we can add if we need?
I can definitely add that in.
Okay, so if, if you're okay, she can add that in, and we can make a motion with her adding in our, our comments why we didn't approve it.
I'll, I'll make that motion to approve the minutes with, on the item, page 14, I don't have the number, that we, after the four against, two, two in favor, list our reasons that we said for the, for the record last meeting.
And that we sent to the applicant. Okay, so I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Ron second. Can I, um, do we need a roll call? We don't, just all those in favor? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, aye's have it. Okay, moving on, public input. Stephanie? Or Samantha, you guys wanna?
We have not received any correspondence written or verbal opportunity to either of the cases today.
Okay, says, so is there anybody that's on our Zoom meeting that's here to speak about anything other than what's on our agenda? No, okay. Thank you very much. So, let's go on to her case. Samantha, Ms. Mendez, please take it away.
Okay, Chairman Black, the first item on our agenda is a quasi judicial public hearing for variance approval request PB 20200373. Stephen Gomez is requesting approval of a variance to approach nine feet into the required 10 feet side setbacks designated by the C2, Community Commercial District, to construct an outdoor seating patio on lot 2A of the State National Bank tract located at 1712 Southern Drive, Ruidosso, New Mexico.
Okay.
And we do have two representatives for that application with us.
Alright, who's gonna speak for the applicant? Um, is that, or both of you guys?
We'll let Mark speak. He's, he's the architect involved, so I'll let Mark Younger speak to the, the plan. But I'm also here available if you guys have any questions for me directly as well.
Alright, thank you, sir. Mark, take it away, Mr. Younger.
Alright, so one of the effects of the coronavirus is that customers are less comfortable in a crowded restaurant environment, and are becoming used to the, you know, the current six-foot spacing requirements. We predict, you know, because of, as fallout, I guess, from this pandemic, is that people are gonna still want to eat out, but they're gonna wanna maintain a decent spacing, rather than the, the kinds of crowded restaurants we used to have. So currently, with the COVID restrictions, Cornerstone is seating 84 customers inside, and they currently have their temporary tent outside with 36 additional seats. That's approximately 45% of the designed indoor capacity. So it's a significant change of what, what was going on before. After the restrictions are lifted, we think that we could increase the indoor seating slightly, but it's not gonna be close to the 187 seats we had, you know, in the last couple of years. It's just unrealistic to expect customers to keep coming when, if, if we packed the tables back in as, as the restaurant was designed earlier. So, to serve the customers and also to meet Cornerstone's financial needs, we're proposing a permanent outdoor seating area to the east of the restaurant, which is between the existing patio walkway and the drive-through of the neighbor's bank. It'll be at the same level as the existing covered patio, so walk straight out, and it'll only be accessible from that side. So, you'll walk from the restaurant basically straight onto it. On the roadside, there'll be a low wall, and on the east and north sides, which are towards the bank and towards the parking lot, there'll be a high screening walls. To allow for this deck, we're requesting a variance to the building setback on that side.
Okay, does, anybody have any questions for Mr. Younger? Everybody else?
I, I just wanna make sure that I don't miss out on the opportu, sorry, Alan. I just wanna make sure I don't miss out on the opportunity to, to ask for clarification on some of the staff findings. I, I was a little late getting into this email in detail. I, I did receive it from, from you all this last week, but I just, prior to the meeting, got in to see that there is a suggestion to deny the request. So I, I'm, I'm assuming that at some point, we're gonna go into those three findings in detail to find out what, what the basis is of those, those recommendations. Is that correct?
Yes, you'll have the opportunity to ask the staff about that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Alan.
I was just, these are gonna be part of the questions that he, he's gonna respond to, 'cause I was gonna ask the same questions about staff and, and issues. So, I'll, I'll wait till after the hearing and such.
Okay. Scarlett, Ron, you guys have anything?
No.
Okay. Alright, Stephen, if you guys wanna go ahead and go over those concerns, I don't know who's gonna address that, you or Samantha.
Yeah, so one of the, one of the things that we realized that staff has highlighted, the, the ordinance on, and the statement in the ordinance is about, basically, the geography of the lot. We're wondering, would not, because this is a restaurant, and, and the size of it and the seating, for example, we, we are required to have a certain amount of parking. And because of that requirement, and because of the layout of the lot, we really have only two options as far as outdoor seating goes. One, one is the existing tent, which is not in a particularly safe location, and the other one is the one that we're proposing. So we're kind of asking for a little clarification on the, I mean, these special circumstances do seem to be particular to this property. Yep.
So, for clarification, that recommendation for denial was based on the variance should be granted for hardship related to the physical characteristics of your land, such as steep lots that are unbuildable, would be an example. We feel that the amount of parking that you all have does meet the building code requirements, so that is not an issue as far as you all losing parking spaces. And the detached outdoor seating where you currently have your temporary seating would be an approvable location for, for outdoor dining.
Now, if I can interject for just a second, so you know why we, why we decided to move away from that current location. There's, there's some tremendous safety concerns, not just for patrons that are right there dining, where they're dining now with a temporary tent, but also for my staff having to cross back and forth in front of our drive-through area, along with that, that entrance. We've got two, two access points into our property to get into our restaurant, and that, that tent is really encroaching on that, that space for people to make wide turns to come into that restaurant, right there off of an extremely busy road. In, in times past, we've, we've done other measures to try to mitigate any kind of safety concerns that we have from that corner area, because it does tend to get congested, especially on these crazy weekends like we just got through now. You've got people who are, you know, coming up pretty fast. That's, that's before the, the fee is reduced as you approach midtown. So unfortunately, we've had, we've had a couple accidents on that, on that corner over the three years that we've been in that location. So we're really trying to be extra careful not to add more congestion up into that, that corner of the property. But also, I, I, I find that that, that offers a significant safety issue for my staff, who then have to serve food and drinks crossing over that parking lot to get over to diners. The, the space on the other side is just much more feasible. It's, it's, it's dead space. It's not being used for anything. So, so that, it, it certainly seems to be the most feasible logical option to put an outdoor seating spot, in my opinion. On top of the fact that even though we have some additional parking spots there, that, that is the whole goal here for Ruidosso, is more parking. So I'd hate to say, let's, let's, let's add in more seating, just to make up for the seating that we've lost due to this mess that we're going through, and let's take up parking because of it. Because even, even though we have ample parking spaces for, to meet code, those parking spots are filled up all the time. It, it, throughout the summer, those parking spots will be used. We, we've also wanted to make our location a little bit more user-friendly for our older clientele, which means we have, we have added in an additional, I think there's three or four extra handicap parking spots on top of what was required from us when we first laid out that floor plan out there. And again, we would hate to have to take away two or three of those handicap spots, and that's where that temporary tent is located right now, sitting right over the ADA accessible spot. Again, we would still be in compliance at that time, but, but why, why, why do that to our guests and customers? That's my thought.
Have, have you guys heard anything from Compass Bank there, or have you all talked to anybody in Compass about your plans, or you haven't heard anything?
I, I didn't hear anything from Compass Bank. I, I was reached out by the commercial property on the other side. They, they, you know, had some questions. We, we talked about what the game plan was, and thus far, I haven't heard any objections to our plan. And again, those of you who are familiar with that spot, you, you can understand why. There's really not, yeah, I'm, I'm really confused on, on line item number three, where it's talking about the safety, welfare of the customers and the neighboring financial institution. And I'm guessing you're referring Samantha to Compass Bank there. So maybe, maybe clarification on that denial recommendation might clear up my next question.
Alright, well, let's go on to number two. Samantha, what's your concern?
Okay.
So, I wanted to touch base on your drive-up window that you had mentioned earlier. I looked through records and I couldn't find where that was properly permitted. Do you have, that side of the building would be more appropriate per the code to add your patio dining?
That, that drawing, that drive-through window, and all these, these plans were stamped, final stamped back in, I'm looking at it right now, that was back October 2014 that was produced. And I don't, I'm not sure the stamp date, but yes, that, that, that drive-through is not something new since we built that location. That, that drive-through was built as part of the original plan for the bakery.
So, Chairman Black, the variance, I don't feel that this application meets the strict provisions of the variance requirements per code and having a hardship of the land. So that is what we based recommendation number two off of.
Okay. And then recommendation number three, or condition number three?
So our finding number three would be the privacy of the customers in that last drive-up stall, all of their personal information that could be heard by the patio diners. So we were taking into effect the, the adjacent property and the uses that were already taking place right there in close proximity.
I, yeah, so I, I understand what, what you're getting at, Samantha, but I'll tell you, if, if, if the bank had any concern about that, they would most definitely have responded as they had when I first built in that location. They had a lot of questions about that, as far as us being such close neighbors to them. But we, Mark and I spent a lot of time making sure that we had a design that we would allow the privacy of the folks who are going through that drive-through bank, through, you know, building up some high walls on, on that side. Was that the east side, Mark? That is facing towards the drive-through. That is, that is all built up with a pretty high wall, along with some soft music played, so there wouldn't be an encroachment. And we, we wanted to make sure that there wasn't noise pollution coming over from either side, as, as more of a neighborly thing to do, or, or, you know, bank neighbors.
Yeah, and I think I can add too, that, that not related to this directly, but earlier on, when we were working on combining the lots and changing the parking layout during the planning stages of, of the original Cornerstone build, we were in direct contact with the bank, and in fact, they had me come into their bank and measure this, the, the building, and re-calculate the occupancy load for them, to double-check that the parking would work, that the drive-through would work. We did a couple of scenarios, making sure that they had the correct access to their drive-up windows. So I think that if the bank had an issue, they certainly would have been in touch, because they were quite active when we were doing that process a couple of years ago.
So that, that side wall right there between the two banks, if somebody's actually sitting down, is, is, how, is that wall gonna be above head level, or?
Yes. Yeah, that, Mark, I don't, you might have the dimensions on the side, the height of that wall, but you, you, even standing in that patio, we don't, we're actually offering a little more privacy than what, that, what the, what the bank experiences now with people waiting outside that, that side of the restaurant on that ramp, where they can look right through the people's vehicles and the drive-through. But Mark, you might, you have that dimension?
Yeah, it's, currently, we have it just over five feet. From the decking, from the surface you'll be sitting on. So once you're sitting down, you'll be completely blind for sure. I think from the drive-through, it's possible they may see a head walk past, perhaps, but they certainly won't be able to see anybody up there.
Yeah, and I can verify there's people always standing outside there, so. Okay.
And that's, yeah, those, those are modifications that we can certainly work with you all on. If you, if you felt like that was necessary to go up an extra foot. I feel like we've done a sufficient job to allow for the privacy of our neighboring folks there, and, and, but if you guys have more suggestions on how we might be able to provide that, that privacy buffer, you wanna go up another foot, we can certainly discuss that. But I don't, I don't think that that, that clause at all should be, well, of course, I, I, I don't agree with any of the denial findings over here, but especially that last paragraph that is talking about the safety, the health, welfare of the customers of the neighboring property. We, we have managed to do business side by side for, for three years now without any issues. And, and we often have crowds that are, that are filling up and, and lining up alongside that side of the restaurant.
Thank you. Okay. Does anybody else have questions? Does anybody that's not part of the board have questions? So we can... Okay, so should I open up the public hearing and just, okay, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Does anybody that's not on the board wish to speak or ask questions? Okay, no, I'm closing the public hearing. It's something we have to do. And then, does anybody have questions for Mark, or Stephen, or anybody on the council?
Mr. Chair, can I, I'll go first.
Yes, sir.
So, the, I understand the reasoning of what the, the staff has considered about the hardship, because it does not necessarily meet any of the provisions for a hardship variance. And so I guess I'm trying to understand your, I'm talking to the, the owner, understand your reasoning why you're trying to put safety kind of as a hardship. And I guess I'm, I'm not exactly sure. I know, I know the tents out front are bad, but you have a restaurant inside, and so there's, once the tents are gone, again, there's no real safety issue that I can see. And I'm just trying to understand your, your, what it sounds like is you're trying to put safety as part of your hardship. And I, I'm not.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to clarify for you. Safety is, is deciding between the two locations of, of that outdoor patio seating. The, the hardship is not losing any of that, that valuable parking space and making sure that, that the land, it is as such, where I don't, I don't want the staff to be walking through the parking lot to get food out to the guests. So safety is certainly an issue that we're trying to decide which side of the building to put this, this outdoor parking space. But the fact of the matter is, is we, we just can't go back to, to business as usual like we were doing. We can't pack the people into our restaurant the way people have accustomed, you know, or become accustomed to eating at Cornerstone. Most, most folks know when they come to eat at Cornerstone on, throughout the summer, they know we're gonna pack them in like sardines. That's just not socially acceptable. So we do have to find a way to still serve the, the guest account that we're accustomed to, so we can go ahead and make sure that we can keep up and continue to be a successful business in Ruidosso. So in doing such, we're looking at outdoor seating as an opportunity to go ahead and grow back into the table space that we know we need in order to make our numbers work. But the hardship comes because the, the lay of the land doesn't be with that, that corner area. The, the safety is most definitely falling into play with, with that being part of the hardship. You know, we've, we've gotta keep that corner free and clear.
Understand.
So I might be missing something.
Well, the tents were put there by you. It was a self-created, self-created potential safety problem. So I'm, I'm not getting all that. So let me ask a little bit about the construction. So this is a, a permanent fixture to the building, to the existing building? Or is it kind of an attached sheltered area?
Oh, well, let Mark add to the structure.
So it's, it's attached to the side, but it's freestanding structurally. So there, there will be some load on, transferred through to some existing post there. And of course, the joists will most likely be hung on to the concrete edge of the existing patio. But the structure itself will be, you know, obviously, we're not trying to overload the existing deck. We're, we're gonna, you know, create our own footings, and, and it will be essentially built very similar to a covered deck on a house.
Okay. How many, how many seats going to be in part of this?
Yeah, that's a good question. I.
I'm sorry, that was the question I missed, and I apologize.
That's okay. How, how many seats is this covering gonna have?
Thirty-five. It's, it's 35 seats that, for diners, and then I think we added in additional, I want to say 15 or 20 for patrons who are waiting for seating. And, and again, this is in, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, an outdoor seating, does it have the same requirements by executive order about social distancing and 50% and all that?
It does right now, yes.
Okay. Alright. So, so back to the, I guess, construction of it. So the overhang, you're only gonna be a foot away from the bank driving pad. Drainage going on to the neighbors, or are you taking care of drainage, rooftop drainage yourself?
Yeah, so this, this, let's see, we have roughly currently just a small overhang on that outside, so probably six inches or so. And we can take care of all of the drainage by guttering that side. It's a straight shot. We can get it all the way to the back, or the front, if we can get it down into the existing stormwater runoff. But I think most likely, we'll take it to the back, and we'll deal with it there before it leaves the property.
Okay. Setbacks are, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, it's important to know too, that, that originally, those I was just going to say it's important to note too that, that originally those, those two buildings were attached when we, when we first, uh, built that, that restaurant. So, and, and I couldn't tell you exactly what the drainage was then, but I know that it's, at, at one point, those two buildings were attached and there is definitely a way to mitigate the drainage.
Got it. So the setbacks, you know, usually they're reserved for, uh, fire protection and, and access for emergency crews and I guess that's why I asked about if it's freestanding or a structure. And I guess I'm going to ask Sam in building, is it since considered a structure? Commercial structure? Does it have to be, uh, set with sprinklers and, um, things like that? Or is this really an outdoor canopy type of thing? I, I, I don't know what the building code is and how you consider this if it's a structure or just a canopy.
I don't know what the building code requirements would be for having a sprinkler that outside patio. Uh, should you all choose to approve this, that could be one of the conditions based on meeting that section of the building code.
Yeah, and my, sorry, my, my understanding of that code in that area is because it's separated, um, and if necessary, we can add some further fire separation in the structure. Um, it counts as a separate structure from the building and the square footage isn't significant enough to require sprinklers, uh, is my understanding.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that's all the questions I have for now.
Okay. Anybody else have some questions?
Yeah, Steve. Uh, is there any other part of the building here that you maybe could have put this on?
Uh, the, the two options that we found was again, were the temporary tents sit now or, or the opposite side of the, uh, the restaurant where we're asking for the variance.
Uh-huh.
That, that's, originally we had, uh, we had talked about going rooftop patio, but a million dollars in incentive and my bank came to build a nice new rooftop patio. This is, this is what I've got to work with.
So you said that, that, uh, the bank and your building used to be all connected at one time?
Correct. Yeah, it was all owned by First State Bank back when First State Bank used to operate out of that location. So when I bought it from, uh, it was then Compass Bank, now BVA. It, uh, that overhang for their drive-through actually connected all the way to, um, to our building.
And I believe I have photos and, um, old surveys to show that if you need it.
Thank you.
Uh, Stephen, so if you went with the west side of the building, the side that the tent is currently on, but you had it connected to the building as you're proposing now, you were saying that would take out too many parking spots that you need?
Well, no, we couldn't connect it to the building because that's the, that's the exit from our parking lot. Getting people past the drive-through and out, in, back onto stutters. So there's no way to connect, uh, any kind of outdoor parking there to the building on that side. And, uh, that was the safety objection is having my staff walk across the traffic to get over to an outdoor, uh, space. Not to mention inconvenience, but certainly a safety issue as well.
Right, and if you did route the traffic all the way to the side property line, you'd have to remove the, the really big tree in the parking lot right behind it and you would remove, uh, at least four handicap parking spaces and, um, I think ten other parking spaces along that side. That there wouldn't be space to replace.
It's almost impossible to maneuver a big truck in that area as it is. So I don't know how if you built a, if you built something onto the side of that, you would even be able to get cars in there because then they have no maneuverable room, so. Just from my drive-through there last week. Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Gomez or Mr. Younger, you guys have anything else you'd like to say before we move on?
I don't believe so.
All right, um. So, if you guys choose, I would like to have a motion to approve or deny, the applicant's request.
Sam, in your recommendation, uh, you have a deny motion. Uh, I, I'm assuming it's proper through these processes to make a negative motion, uh, instead of a positive motion and, and vote it down?
You could change the wording, you just, basically the wording is the same if you wanted to approve or deny, so you can just change that wording.
I understand. I, I just, like, like I said, I, I don't like negative motions, but that's just...
So you, so you can make the move to, to, like I said, you could say approve and then everybody else can vote, um, on it or not and you can vote on it or not. So I mean, I, I, I know what you're saying, but, but staff's recommendation is to the board is that we deny it, right? So, but, um, doesn't necessarily mean we have to listen to that recommendation.
Well, I didn't hear anything from our attorney, so, uh, based on the foregoing findings of fact, section fifty-four dash sixty of the Village Code, I move to deny the request variance of case number PV twenty-twenty dash oh-three-seven-three with the conditions as listed in the case report.
So if somebody wanted to vote for it, they would say nay, correct?
Nay, that's correct.
And if you want to vote against it, you would say aye. Okay.
The motion was to deny, yes.
Okay, so can I get a second? Okay, so. So the, so the, can I get a second to deny? Okay, let's do. If, can I get a second to deny? Okay, the motion to deny fails, so would like somebody else, we need to make a motion to approve. Does anybody would like to make a motion to approve? Okay.
I think, I think if I can, I think we need to possibly look at this a little bit more, um, because I, I think there's some things that possibly can be done that I quite don't have in my head yet. Um, that might make this a better situation, um, that maybe if we can look at this a little bit longer, um, then come back to it, um, shortly. Um, you know, I don't know if today is that shortly, but in the next week or two. Um, because I think there's a solution here, um, where it's, it's, it's helping our, our local business owner, um, you know, survive. Um, but it's also going to, you know, maybe trying not to, you know, encroach maybe so much or, or things like that. Um, so can we, can we do something to where we, um, look at this a little, little, little harder?
Hard.
Um, and I might try and put together some ideas myself to, uh, to, you know, hopefully, you know, get some, get something done here that, that helps Steve and Cornerstone break your out.
Well, I mean, I honestly think they have done. I think we've got to look at this and say, um, we're going through different times right now. Um, this isolation stuff, we don't know. It could be two years down the road before, um, before they've given an all-clear and we can go back to jamming people into restaurants and stuff. And I think, in my opinion, um, they have done what we've asked them to do, um, even though I know, um, it doesn't necessarily meet the criteria for hardship, um, in that particular circumstance, but it certainly does in other circumstance. Um, and I don't know if I'm allowed to make a motion as a chairman. Um, but I would definitely make a motion and see if we can get this...
I'd like to entertain a motion.
Okay, so I will, again, once again, entertain a motion to approve, um, their request.
I have a question.
Please.
Um, so on the, let me see what page it says, page six. It says if the planning commission votes to approve this application, staff, staff recommends that the following conditions of approval be imposed, and there's one through five there. So if we make a motion to approve, is that, does that go along with it or do we need to change the wording?
You can apply all of those conditions or some and also add additional conditions if there's something that's come up.
Does anybody have thoughts on that?
I should like to see, I don't know if I'm allowed to, can I, can I speak right now or is this, is my time done?
Go ahead.
I, I just, I, I, I know, um, the time is of the essence on this. I, I need to, I need to start moving on a plan. So what I'd love to, to, you know, have with you guys is some dialogue on what it is that you guys would like to see come about to this patio that's going to meet whatever the objection is, but I'm still really quite unclear about what, what, what the objections are and I'm reading it on, on the, the staff findings and recommendations, but I'm still, uh, I'm still not processing that and seeing it the, the way Samantha is laying it out here for us. So i- if there's, if there's other ways that you guys would like to see this, this, uh, request being done, I'd love for us to have that dialogue so Mark and I can hit the drawing board, but I, I certainly don't, uh, I don't want to drag this on any longer than I have to. I need to get this cleaned up and running and, and moving so we can, uh, try to gain a little bit more than that seating capacity. Um, again, the tent, tent is nice, but that's, again, it's just that...
Um, can there be something that's more permanent instead of a, an outdoor patio? Something that's more of a, like a permanent structure, like an actual dining room area, you know, building? You know, I know you've got that ramp down the, down the side of your building. Um, you know, maybe incorporating something into, uh, you know, just adding on to the structure. Um, or is that, is that going to be too much of a, you know, financial um, hardship situation or, or something to where, you know, it's not feasible in a sense to do that? Um, you know, because I, I guess I don't, you know, without seeing like a plan, plan, which I didn't see in the packet, I kind of have a, I don't have a good idea of, of what a patio per se, you know, would, would entail.
So to answer your question, yeah, I think, I think the cost would be astronomical to actually, um, enclose, uh, another dining room space to increase the, the capacity. And, and really, you know, we, we need that capacity during the summer season when our weather is absolutely beautiful. Uh, and it, it would be silly not to take advantage of doing a, a little outdoor space for people because that's what people are looking for when they come to visit our town. But also, uh, more importantly, Jonathan, we've got, uh, with this new COVID age that we're living in, we've got, um, we're, we're really working hard to make sure that we're doing our part not to be part of the, the, uh, the continuation of this pandemic. And so we actually have everybody filtering in one door and exiting out the back door through the back of the restaurant. So we're, we're really, and, and I don't, again, even with the vaccine coming down the pipeline and, you know, hopefully by the end of the year, uh, there's still going to be an expectation from our guests that say we want you to do everything you can to keep us distanced and keep us safe as we're dining in your establishment. And because of that, we have everybody filtering in through that front entrance, up that ramp, and then they're all filtering out the back door. So we have them all coming in one way and out another.
Okay. Well, just, just a thought, you know, I, I'm just trying to to think of, I don't know.
If it's sort of a soundproofing thing that you're kind of thinking of as far as, uh, to the, um, drive-through, but there is a possibility of making that sidewall on the, uh, east side more substantial.
What's, is it, what's the zoning there, if I might ask Samantha?
It's a C-two.
And then is it C-three or C-one that's got no setbacks?
C-three.
C-three?
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe there's a motion on the floor and I don't know if this is, uh, relevant to the second or not.
Well, if I can't get nobody to second it, then we're... Well, he made a motion to deny.
To deny.
Alan made a motion to deny, but nobody would second it because...
So there's nothing on the table. There's nothing.
So, um...
I mean, can, can a, can a variance hardship be, be considered? Um, even though it's not necessarily a, a land situation, but maybe something needs to be considered for the situation we are in, in our country, regardless of how you feel about it. Um, because I don't, I don't like it myself. Um, can, can the village view that as a hardship in this type of case, Samantha? Because I think, you know, you know, when you go from seating, say, you know, a hundred and fifty people on a Saturday afternoon for lunch to sixty-five people, you know, or sixty people or whatever, you know, the, the number is. I mean, that's a, that's a huge, huge financial hit. You know, and, and it's nothing that, that Steve, it's not Steve's issue. You know, it's not Cornerstone's issue, it's, it's our current, um, issue, you know, in our code because our code has never had to deal with this type of situation.
Yes.
I'm, I'm, Jonathan, I'm reading a little bit about that in the variance. It says special circumstances or conditions fully described in the planning and zoning's finding are peculiar with the land or building for which the adjustment sought and do not apply generally to land or buildings in the neighborhood and have not resulted from any act of the applicant or adoption of this article. I'm thinking that is the only provision we might stretch to for the situation we're in right now with the COVID and the, the executive orders and such. Uh, but then again, I will defer to legal, I'm just reading a bunch of words.
I can read a bunch of words too, but, I mean, we're unprecedented time, so. I'm looking at page seven of your staff findings and recommendations. Number two says additionally, staff finds that in accordance with fifty-four sixty-six A-two variances, the circumstances or conditions are such that the strict application of the provisions of this article would not deprive the applicants of the reasonable use of the land or building, the granting of the variance is not necessary for the reasonable use thereof. Well, aren't the circumstances that we're living in now, doesn't that restrict the use of their building to potentially an unreasonable degree?
Yes. Thank you.
But the variance doesn't deal with the use, it just deals with the physical characteristics of the land or the building?
I understand.
Yeah, we're...
Yeah, so then, but I mean, with that statement Samantha, he, he wouldn't need to come and do a variance. Right? I mean, because his variance isn't because of land or, you know, building. It's because of a, a financial hardship that's been caused by, um, the, the craziness is going on in our world today. And it, you know, so...
But, uh, variances are not granted based on financial hardship.
Right.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying just that either. I'm, you know, it's, it's... I, I think it's something we need to consider because he wouldn't be here asking if this wasn't going on.
Right. No, I understand people are preferring outdoor dining right now. Um, it's just by applying what the code reads as a variance, I don't feel like we're depriving Stephen of reasonable use of his property.
So it's actually, Samantha is actually looking at what the code says and what the letter of the law says.
The U-Law.
We... We have, as the council or whatever, have the right to say, yes, we've, I see what that says, but in this particular time, doesn't mean we have to abide by that strictly. It means we can make the interpretation on our own.
And if I can follow up on that, Mr. Chairman, the only thing that can be appealed from a decision to deny or to approve would be from somebody who was affected by your decision, either Mr. Gomez or a neighbor. And the only thing that they can plead to a district court, which is where an appeal would go after it went to the, you know, council or whatever, is that your decision was arbitrary and capricious. And arbitrary and capricious means that you guys did not weigh the evidence in front of you and you just willy nilly made a decision. By sitting here having a conversation about this for the time that we've done so, and you guys considering all the circumstances, including the circumstances surrounding the COVID-19 or whatever.
Okay, so can I make a motion?
Please.
Okay, based on, based upon the foregoing findings of fact per section 54 dash 66 of the village code, I move to approve the requested variance in case number PB dash 2020 dash zero three seven three, with the conditions stated in the case report.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, um, can I get a roll call, please?
Can I, can I get clarification?
Sure.
So why was that motion different than the chair's motion?
So I didn't actually make a motion, I was asking.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was asking somebody else to please make a motion.
Okay, got it, sorry.
Okay. Okay, can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Riley?
No.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah.
We do, okay, um, Commissioner, um, Ron, are you here?
It looks like he's off. He fell off about 10 minutes ago. I'll come back.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Tandino?
Yes.
Do you want me to wait for?
So we have, um.
What was Tandino?
Yes.
She said yes. So I have, um, Riley is negative, Kelly is positive, Tandino is positive. I'm waiting on Michaelina, and then I can get Chairman what, unless we're not doing the thing.
We can skip Michaelina since he fell off.
Okay.
Commissioner.
This requires two thirds.
So we already have a pass, but I.
Motion carries.
All right, congratulations, thank you, I'm sorry. But we are.
Thank you guys for your testimony. I do appreciate y'all.
All right, um, moving on.
Our next order of business, Chairman Flag, is a public hearing for ordinance amendment to chapter 54, section 146, lot numbering, uh, recommendations to amend and revise, uh, this. Right now, um, it's currently about a paragraph long and it addresses lot numbering as well as street naming, um, which hasn't been working so well for the village till now. So what we would like to do is propose this ordinance, uh, be approved and codified. And, um, once approved, we would go by and readdress, um, several of the areas in the community so that it ensures, um, 911's response. And it's a public, a matter of public safety. So we're looking for a recommendation from this commission to council, um, to adopt the, uh, the ordinance revision.
Question, Mr. Chairman, Sam? So you said it has, has not been working until just now, what, what had been working and how did it just recently?
Well, throughout town, um, we have a lot of numbering that is off, um, that just is not sequential. Uh, some, there's even numbers on both sides of the street. Um, 911's response time is being delayed because of this and also because of people not posting the proper address. And the way the code currently reads, we don't have much enforcement opportunity to have people post their correct address. So what we're proposing is adopting this ordinance and as we readdress areas, the first address placard would be provided by the village and the fire department would be installing those on our behalf. And, um, we would go by sections of town until we are completely in compliance with 911 addressing.
So I know the county went through a big change, 911, stuff like that too. So you're just talking about downtown area or?
The entire village of Rudosso.
The thing, I mean, Samantha, I think you're talking about, you said that you have all, uh, even numbers on one side. You mean, it's, in some areas, it's even, it's not uniform, correct?
Right, even.
Yes, well, some streets, there's even numbers on the entire left and right side of the street.
Yeah.
Right, because they're loops or circles and, and big, goes east and west, north and south, and it goes all different directions. I, I know where they're at.
So are you talking about commercially, you know, me to him, you're not talking about the houses and going through that, or everything all over again?
Yes, sir.
Oh my God, that's.
Right now, there's.
That would be a nightmare for my business. Yeah, that'd be crazy.
Do you remember Mountain Oasis, they came in for their new commercial building and they couldn't post the address that's been provided by the village because just a block up, that address was posted.
Right.
So we run into that quite often, so we need to get it straightened out.
So, uh, at, at one of our cabins, Stephanie, you had us readdress it to the correct number. So are y'all talking about even those recent corrections being redone? Or we're just, that, that is part of this?
Yes, if they make sense and, um, they're logistically placed, uh, properly, they'll remain the same. It's just there are many major discrepancies. And another issue that we're coming across that dispatch brought to our attention is the adjacent communities have the same street names, and so that's also slowing response time. So we need to, um, they've been identified, the road names that are coming out of Rudosso Downs and Alto, and so we need to look at that and see how we can improve our 911 response and addressing in those areas as well.
Well, I think Ridosso should change, Ridosso Downs should change.
We have a committee that's, uh, been working on this, composed of public works, fire, police, dispatch, code enforcement, planning GIS, and so, um, moving forward, when we do go to re, uh, select areas to readdress, that committee would convene to make sure that we're doing the right thing for our citizens.
Sam, I have a question about that committee. So I, I've been up against this problem with addressing in other communities. And once we change addresses and street names, it doesn't correspond with utility addresses and street names. It's, uh, it was worth my while to put, it was especially the phone company onto my committee so that they could help us make sure that we're, that people couldn't get service because they have the wrong address according to the utility company.
That is something we face right now as well. People are willing to use their newest address that's been given to them. Um, but we actually send a letter to all utilities as well as the county, and if they request one to their, uh, mortgage holder, um, we also send it to USPS. So we try to make sure that we are going to file those and get them a letter. So those will be going out as well as properties are readdressed.
So if we make a recommendation to go forward on this, does it go to the council next meeting? Or where, when does it go to council?
I've put a request to council, uh, in July to schedule a public hearing for August.
Okay, I only have one question reading through this. It was on page seven and page, page eight. So you have a little drawing on top, on the top of page eight, but a, a little note on the bottom, it says, if your house is not, is not visible or too far from the road, you need to put up this type of sign, but in the paragraph two, prior to that, it says all addresses should be done this way. So I was a little confused on, do all addresses have to put the little sign up at that driveway? Or just those that are not seen from the house?
Uh, so that's why it's a comma and the display your address at both the driveway entrance and at your house, especially if you're sharing a driveway, so we want it where the driveway intersects with the street.
Okay, but on page seven, on number two above, it says all owners of addressable structures shall establish this sign in accordance with the following standards, and that sign picture is.
So all owners must display their, um, address placard perpendicular to the street so it's viewable when, um, emergency services are coming down the street. However, if you have a, a long driveway where the home is not visible from the street, then you must display at the entrance as well as at your home.
Okay. I was unclear of the drawing because it said only if it's not visible from the street, but the paragraph four said all.
I don't see where it says only.
Um, go one, two, three paragraphs up, when it says number two, display of address numbers, all owners of addressable structures or units shall establish and display their assigned address number in conformity with the following standards. And then you have A and B and C is the following standards, and the C is the fine. That says if you're not visible from the street.
Right, the, the diagram is just to display how we want them installed, but we.
Or just. Or just those that you can't see from the street.
No, we want them at the, at, um, the intersection of the driveway, but if you cannot see it from, if you can see the home.
If you can see it, you don't have to do this, but that's not what this says. Says all shall be doing this per the standards as follows, A, B, and C. And I'm just thinking it should be A or B or C maybe.
Okay, uh, we'll review that.
Just, just look at it, it, it was a little confusing with, what, because I said, do I have to put a little, even though you can see 12 addresses from the street, do I have to put up a little sign at my driveway now?
Yes.
So it makes sense. Okay, thank you.
And then like, we have one on our mailbox, does that count? No?
We want them to be uniform.
And have a lot of little signs to keep up to.
You can still have your mailbox.
You can have all, your wedding card one or whatnot, we're not going to make you take it down as long as it relates with the addresses on the sign.
So the little sign, like in, you know, in the cities, they paint the address on the.
I wish we had that option, that would be nice. Wouldn't have much curb in Ridosso.
No.
I like where the county does it.
The what?
I like where the county does it.
It's reflective and.
Yeah, they do it.
So one, Mr. Chairman, I have one more question. Like, I'm, I'm assuming we know how extensive this is. Have we put a price tag or a fiscal, uh, price tag on this of what it's going to cost the, uh, all the residents of Ridosso to change their letterhead and their addresses and all their billing information and all this kind of stuff like that? Have we put a number to it?
I understand it'll have a financial impact, you know, people have their personalized stationery and, you know, all of those things, but I don't think we can put a price on life safety, you know, if you're having a heart attack and they can't find you because you're off of, you know, a street that's addressed incorrectly. I don't think we can put a price on our residents' lives.
It's a good, it's, it's a good explanation when they start calling you about it.
Do we have any idea, like, I mean, changing addresses on the street is one thing, but changing the actual street name is, is. I mean, I just literally had one today where I had a, had a customer, um, lived in Alto and then that, they wanted to know, well, what is this a property address, says you own this? Well, it's the same address, the county changed the, the street, the actual street name, not just the number. So now we got to explain, you know, yeah, it's one of the same property, does not own two separate properties. It's the same property, the county, so we had to go through verification, get the county to send us records saying they changed the.
When you get the address verification letter from the county, does that clarify all the questions?
Yeah.
So that's what they'll have to do is just retain that in their records.
Definitely works, we've got to do it actually a bunch of times, but, I mean, literally, since this is funny, it came up, I had to do it today, so.
Hi, Ron, are you back in the meeting? I can put you on speakerphone.
Oh, wow, yeah, I can listen if it's okay on this, because I'm, uh, I'm logged off and then we'll log on.
All right, well, you're on speakerphone, okay?
Okay.
And we blamed you for everything, by the way. Cool, okay, so we just need a motion to send this to, uh, you're going to check into what Alan had said about the, the verbiage, so it's not confusing, and then we just need to send this to council?
Yes.
And I'm reading it again, and I can interpret it. Corrections, yeah.
Yes, Ron, we've moved on to the, um, addressing ordinance, and we were discussing, um, the display of address numbers. In the ordinance on page A, it talks about the address placard being perpendicular to the street so that emergency responders can see from either direction. And then if the home is set back further than what you can see from the street, then they should display at the intersection of the driveway and street as well as on their home. And if it's a shared driveway, then, especially if they're sharing a driveway.
So you can, if you can see the address on the house from the street, you don't need the one on the road? Or do you still want?
You should have the one on the road, not on your home, because what if your home is on fire? And then they're not going to know where.
Doomsday lady today. Burning my house down, changing my business.
Yeah, I'm not looking forward to readdressing the town though, and then I'm on one of the streets that will be, so it's like.
So you don't really care about the one in the house you wanted on the street?
So it's uniform and easily identifiable.
So what, what if, what if I actually have a curb and I could paint my address on my curb? Do you, you still want the little placard?
Yes.
Are you going to plug, provide the placards, or is everybody asked to go buy their own?
The first one will be provided by the village. We actually have a grant, um, that Joe Kazabowski, our emergency services director, was able to get, so we're going to use that up, uh, initially and then.
Is it pretty much going to look just like that shows right there? How, how high do you want it up or?
Four feet.
Four feet.
And, um, it'll be, uh, white reflective background with black numbers.
Okay. I mean, I think you're right, it's a good idea and it's more important. But, yeah, okay, so I'll take a motion to send this to council. Ron?
He is entertaining a motion from you all to approve this, to recommend to the village council.
I haven't heard that we, the other, uh, county commissioners, uh, I'm not sure if there was an argument for or against.
Um, so there was not really an argument for or against, we were just talking about some of the verbiage to be clarified. Saying either and or, so, but Samantha's basically fixing that, um, but Alan said you. Samantha's basically fixing that. But Alan said it could be.
You can interpret it anyway, but also I, I had the question about, you know, the, the fiscal part of this and Sam did a very good answer of what she's going to have to answer to the people on the phone. So again, getting, getting emergency services to you in case of emergency is more important than changing a couple of numbers on your street sign.
And of course, once it's done, it's done and hopefully never have to do it again.
Yes.
And that's some, that's the big, big part, I think.
One part of this is the addressing will be issued to vacant lots as well, so we don't run into this in the future.
Did you guys hear that?
Yes.
Yes, and it should be.
Okay, again, I'll ask for a motion to approve to send to council.
I motion to approve to send it to council.
Okay. Can I get a second? Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner McElina?
Yes.
Commissioner Tandino? There's another. And Commissioner Fox?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Okay, okay, community development report. Do we have anything going on?
We have a lot going on. We will be submitting our CDBG grant application that we had first started talking about last November for the replacement of water and sewer lines in the Town and Country subdivision. We will also be redoing the streets in that subdivision after the work is complete as well as adding additional fire hydrants for fire protection to that subdivision. And so that will be submitted this week and scoring will be out in early October. So we'll know if we're funded. The other grant that we are working on right now is a metropolitan redevelopment plan. We have hired Site Southwest by contract to conduct a study of SEDRA. We had a steering committee meeting about a month ago and they have since come to Rudoso and taken pictures and inventory the vacant buildings throughout SEDRA from the circle of near Upper Canyon down to the Y at highway seventy and also blighted buildings. And they'll be bringing back their findings, I would anticipate probably in the next month. And that's where we're at with that plan. What else am I working on right now? We also have a grant application to do a study. U and M would be doing a Bieber study, which would do an analysis based on our consumers here locally to see where the leakage is with economics. Where we have holes in our local economy and we can use that plan to try to entice businesses to move into our areas. Oh, yes, and we've also had our Rudoso Safe Campaign running since the end of March. Friday, Saturday, and Sundays, we go out to Midtown and we hand out individual bags filled with one mask, a pair of gloves, and a small bottle of hand sanitizer to help encourage COVID safe practices of those visiting Rudoso as well as locals. If they need that type of a PP, they are welcome to come out and get a bag. So we've had that going every weekend and we plan to continue through the summer.
So tell us a little bit about, I'm sorry, I know you guys are probably hurried, but about the lakes. How, what's that been kind of a?
So we were having a heavy impact to the surrounding neighborhoods by those attending Grindstone Lake. Not just the traffic, but the noise and the trash. And to try to help those neighborhoods, we are no longer allowing people to park in the right of way. We're limiting them to reservations, three hundred vehicles per day at Grindstone Lake. And that has helped with a lot of the impact that neighbors were feeling by the users of the lake. Out at Alto Lake, we no longer allow people to park along highway forty-eight. The state has posted signs for us saying no parking. And that enforcement would either come from the state police or the county. As well as behind Lake Shore, the county would be charged with enforcing any illegal parking behind Alto Lake. But we are just limiting the, the parking to our actual developed parking areas at Alto to try to lessen the impact as well.
So how about the staff you've had to keep on to have somebody there to tell them that we're full and stuff like that? Is that more, is that the Parks and Recs that's doing that or who?
Parks and Rec has taken charge of addressing the parking, but they've also gotten volunteers from other departments since it is a weekend. Staff is being used at various locations at the, the roadblocks.
Are you guys charging for parking at, at Alto or no?
No, parking's free at Alto, but Grindstone is five dollars per day.
With the five dollar fee and the, the fee that we get from the vessel rentals is more than sufficient to cover the staff costs.
Anybody else have any questions about stuff that's going on? Anybody still there?
Yeah. I'm still here with Steve Gomez.
That was approved. He can move forward as long as he complies with the conditions set forth in the case study.
Are we still on Zoom?
Yes, and you too.
And you too. Okay, so any comments from the commissioners that are still here? Okay, we're going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting if everybody's okay with that.
That's good.
Mr. Cook, you got anything?
That's good. Thank you all.
Cool. Thank you very much. Turn us off.
Okay, thanks.
Bye.